कथुरे परिसूत नामके में मूंद आवदा
May the God's Holy Name be glorified
प्रसंगीन पुस्तकम ओनबनम अधिकारम यत्तावसनम वासिखला
Book of Ecclesiastes Chapter 9 Vers 8 Let their garments be always white and let their head lack no ointment उन वस्त्रंगल एप्पोलुदुम बेलयायुम, उन तलेके एन्नैय कुरयाददायुम इर्पदाह
कथुरे परिसूत नामके में मूंद आवदा
May the God's Holy Name be glorified
इन्हें वस्त्रंगल गाने के रखे तेरी वस्त्रंगल आयरकला और यह वस्त्रंगल आयोरकला
And for some it is a very well-known words and some it may not know it
इन्हें रण्डु वार्ते ओर मनिदनके प्रसंगी तनरे वार्तेले पेशुगर
And here the speaker is speaking about the two verses, two sentences
ओरे वस्त्रंगल रण्डु कारियंगल सुटीकाटपड़गर
In one verse and the two kind of words are represented
उन वस्त्रंगल एप्पोलुदुम बेलयाय इर्पदाह
Let the garments be always white
उन तलेके एन्नैय कुरयाददाय इर्पदाह
And let thy head lack no ointment
बाइबिल पढिकर यल्लारुको इन्हें वार्ते ओर कठलयाह, ओर नेममाह, ओर देवनुडे वार्तयाह कसोलपड़गर
And they that are reading the Bible and these words are given as a commandment or ordinances to them
प्रसंगी अंदु सोन्नुडने, अवन ओर ओदकन अंद्री निंगल एनिवर वेंडा, अवन ईशरेवल इन्हाजा
And then we tell about the speaker and he can not call as a pastor and he is the king of the Israel
सालमुन दानि द वार्ते उभयोहिकर
And Solomon is using this word
इदे अवनुडे वार्ते अल्ल, देवनुडे वार्ते
And this is not his word and it is a word of God
अव आयलुंदु वंद वार्ते अन्न
And what is the word of his mouth?
उन वस्त्रंगल एप्पोलुदुम वेण्मयाय इर्पदाह
Let the garments be always white
रण्डावु वार्ते अन्न
And what is the second word?
उन तलेके एन्नैय कुरयाददाय इर्पदाह
Let their head lack no ointment
इदा पाइच्ची विकर उन्हें की ईसी, इदा कटिनमा एडिकर उन्हें की इदा कटिनमान
And they that are practicing it is easy to them and they that taking in hard way it is difficult to them
इन्दिकि नम्मडे वस्त्रंगल अंबरु, ओलगतल यल्लारुको रंबो मुख्यमान
And the garments is very important in early parts
ओलगतल चोलुवांग, आल्पाधि, आड़ईपाधि न सोल्वा
In the world they used to see and the person half and the garments half
ओर वनुडे वस्त्रत वच्चे अवनुडे तन्मय न पुरिंदु ओल्डमुड़िय
And we can understand the nature of a person by his garments
इन्दिकि निंगल वेदतल निंगल पढितु पार्तान, पलयर पाटिलु, पुदियर पाटिलु, वस्त्रंगल कुरिते, पलविदमान करुत्किल चोलपड़गर
When you read in the scripture we can see and different kind of this garments explanation given in both the Old Testament and the New Testament
इबिन आराधनिको ओर आल वित्यासमान ओर वस्त्रम बोटा, नम्मडे गवनम अंग दान पो
If one is coming in a different order of our boundaries garments, our attention will pay towards him
रण्डावु उन तलेयल एन्नैय कुरयाददाय इर्पदाह
And secondly, and thy head shall lack no ointment
इन्हें तले अंदु सोलुगरु, मुकत्तै सरसै मुडुवुड्यु कान्बिकर
And this head shows your whole face or your head
तलेयल एन्नै रुंदा, मोहो सलिप्पा, काळयाह, तेलिवाकर
If your head is with oil, your face, the continents will be clear, bright and it's so shining
ओर तन पात्तु ओडने ओनु मुकता पापा, इल्लेटा अवन ड्रस्सा पापा, इदे दान अंग इर्कर अप्पियरंस
And looking onto a person, first of all they look onto the appearance of the face or either the garments
ओर तन मुकता पात्तु ओडने, अव उल्लान लवर एन्नगर र कान्टुपुर्सला
Looking onto the face and we can see what is his inward state
अवन ड्रस्सा पात्तालु, अव उल्लान लवर एन्नगर र कान्टुपुर्सला
Looking at those garments and we can identify his inward state
इन्दिकि कथरिंदका वार्तेगलु, नम्मडे जनतोड़ अवर पेश उर्मुगर
Today the Lord want to deal or speak with his people through this word
कलर ड्रस पोटु वंदवु, इन्हें वार्तेगले केटु निंगल आदिर्यपड़कुराद, सोरुंदु बरकुराद, इन्रे थूथु इदु दान
And they that come in colored dress and hearing these words and you should not be discouraged and today's message is this
देवनुडे वार्ते मत्तुमे नाम एडितु कोल्लला
And we have to take only the word of God
पलयर पाटिलु, पुदियर पाटिलु भार्कुम्बरु, नल्ला वस्त्रंगल इर्करु, कट्टा वस्त्रंगल इर्कर
The Old Testament and New Testament, we can see some good garments and evil garments
अदावु इप्पु निंगल फारिन पोनिंग न ओवर नाटलियो, ओवर नल्लवरंगल उल्लवुंग, अंदके एतमारी ड्रस पोटुवांग
And in every countries and according to their culture and they dress themselves
ओर तन पुदिशा विवाहमाय इर्का, अन्न पोन्नुके विवाहाय इर्के, अन्न पायनुके विवाहाय इर्कना, अवुं बोट रिकर कलर वच्चे न सेला, अवन कान्टुपुर्सला
A boy or girl are getting newly married and the color of the dress with the wear and we can identify them
इप्पु कोडन नम्म यदिर्प तेरिविकरो, अब्दीन सोना ओडने करप्पत अनिंजु कोलुकरो
Even if we are seeing our position and they come in black dress
इल्लावु तोर तुक्को, अब्दीन सोना ओडने करप्प ड्रस पोटुकरो
In sorrow and they come in black dress
नागुड़ ओर अर्थल ने ट्रांसफर आने, अंग उल्ला पायंग बोन्नुगला करप्प ड्रस पोटांग
I was transferred to one particular place and the boys and girls of the faith home they wear black dress
इवनला सभी कुल्ले ओलगत खोंडो रुके ट्राइपन्नर
And they are all trying the world to bring the world into the church
इन्दिकि कोड यल्लारुमे करप्प ड्रस पोटु रोडले सुथरु, यदिर्प तेरिविकरु निंगल पाकला
Even today we can see and they are saying their opposition by wearing the black garments
अना आविकुरियुंगल के न ओर ड्रस रुक
But there is a garment for the spiritual one
अदु तगुदियान वस्त्रमाह इर्कुन
And it is a modest garment
ओइटु दान पोटु नुकरुला, ओइटली गुड़ तगुदीलाम पोटुरुंग एतनी ओर रुकर
And not only they are coming in white garments, even some they are unmodestly dressing in black garments
अदावु ओर बिन तन्ने तगुदियान वस्त्रंगल नाल, अलंगरिक वेंडुम अंद्र वेदम सोलुगर
So the scripture clearly says a girl have to adorn herself with modest garments
कथुरे परिसूत नामके में मूंद आवदा
May the God's Holy Name be glorified
ओर सिलर रुम्बर ड्रस रुको, अनालु गुड़ ओर एट ड्रस दान त्रिपीत्रिपी पोटे, अब्दीन मारिशु ठीतेर पांग
And some they have many dresses but still they wear only one dress and they roam around like something
इन्नो ओर सिल पुलिंग अप्पा दिंगने, अन्न ड्रस वायितला, ड्रस वायितला न आलु, अना अंग इर्कर ड्रस कनकलकलाम इर्क
And some children and they have unaccountable dresses but still they will ask of dresses and they need
अनेक मनिविकल डे रिपोर्ट इदे दान, कल्याण कट्टर रुन अन्न अरिनिसेल, ड्रसे वांगिये तरले, अव यंग अम्मा दान वायिकुर्तांग यारो अवन वायिकुर्तांगलिया, पोटित दान रुकर
And many wives report us like this and husband did not give me the garments and my mother purchased this and somehow you're wearing the dresses
बाइबिल सोलुगरु, उन्त ड्रस अरिलन सोना, उन्नक वस्त्रंगले निर्वानते मूडिकुल्ले, एनुडे वस्त्रंगले कोट्टु वांगिकुल्ल वेरिपड़तल मूनामतिकारतल आवियान अवर, लवोरिक्या सभीके पेशुगर
And to the Leviticia church, the spirit of God is speaking to them in Revelation chapter 3 And if their garments are not proper to cover their nakedness and they have to cover themselves with garments
उन मानम कानपड़ादु बडिकु उन वस्त्रते काट्तुकुल अंद्र आवियान अवर सभीगल की चोलुगर
And the Lord is telling to the churches to keep their garments from nakedness and they have to cover them with the nakedness
कथुरे परिसूत नामके में मूंद आवदा
May the God's Holy Name be glorified
पलयर पाटिलु निंगल पार्कुम्बरु, पलय वस्त्रंगले तरितु खोंडरुकरु ओर कोटत निंगल पाकला
When you see the Old Testament and we can see in some group of people and they were putting on their old garments
इवनिंग निंगल पोनिंग न ओर कंपनी के पोनिंग न, अंग ओर यूनिफॉर्म रु
When you go to a company and there will be certain uniform
ओर स्कूल के पोनिंग न, अदु ओर यूनिफॉर्म रु
When you go to school and there is a uniform
ओर स्कूल को ओर यूनिफॉर्म, अवुंग अंद प्लियले वेरुवरिति कान्बिप्परु कागे, अवुं एर्पडित इर्कां
For every schools and we have in different colored uniforms to differentiate them schools
अना कामराजर इन्हें यूनिफॉर्म कोंडु वंदुनुडे नोकम अन्न
But what is the purpose of Kama Raja to bring this uniform?
एर्काक वनु वंदर
Why?
है? प्लियलु कुल्ले एतताल भए इर्के कुराद
And there should not be any differentiation among the children so they don't the system
एन्नो वसदी उल्लमे ओर कलर पोटु ओरुआ, ओनु यार्मया रुको, अद वेर ओर कलर पोटु ओरु अव डिसेंट डिसेंट अन्न अव पोटुकिटे ओरुआ, इदा पात्तु पात्तु अंद प्लिंग याकुंगोल्लो, अन अब्दीन अल्ल यल्लारुको ओर ए यूनिफॉर्म, अब्दीन को वंदर
He who is rich and will come in good garments and the poor will look unto him and they will feel bad So to remove all this differentiation, he brought the system of bringing this uniform
अना पलय वस्त्रंतरितु खोंडु इदे रुकर ओर टीमलाई इर्क
But there are some team and they put on the old garments
इबे जीन्सलानि अप्पा दिंगना, अद तोकियुंडिया उसीमल तोकियुं माता
If you see the jeans, I don't want to wash and there is no need to wash the jeans
अदले सायम पोटुमारी माती कुन्नु दर
And they're also having some dark colors to be removed
अदले क्लिच्चे इप्पु मॉडल वंदर
And some would have come and they're little
अदावु तन मनिदन पाइत्यकारन आकुराद, पाइत्यकारन नल्लवन अमातनो, अद दान समुदायतुनुडे नोक
The purpose of the society you should not change the man like a man, but a man should change like a man
योशुवा ओनबदा मतिकार आयिन्तावसनतल पार्कुम्बरु, गिबियोनियर्गल, योशुवा वै संदिक्के वरुम्बरु क्लिंदु वनय, पलय वस्त्रंगले उडितु खोंडु वंदे, अवन तल यामातिनार
And when we look into Joshua chapter 9 verse 5, we can see the Gibeonites came unto Joshua and coming in the old garments to desert him
ओर वयदान ओर नबर, फैथमले यामातुमुड़ियाह वंदा
An old man came to the faith home to cheat them
काल्ल ओर परीय कट्टु पोटु रुद
And he had a bandage in his hands
नंडी, 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 नंडी नरंदु वंदा
And he came by walking lightly
वंदु फैथमले साप्तार
He came and eat the faith
अवके साप्पड़ कुरुकप्पट्टद, अवके उन, पनं कुरुकप्पट्ट
And food and money was provided to him
अना इद उनवु उन पनमु कुरुत्तालो, अवकी सिल कारियंगले दिर्कील
When the food and money is given to him and he was not satisfied with some matters
अन्न फैथमले आयनमंत्रकु पोटु रुन द शीट, अवकी साप्पड़ कुरुद प्लेट, एलाति त्रिड़ि उल्लवच्छित
And he took all the ironing sheets and provided to him and the plates which is given to him
निंग ओर सिल साच्ची सोलुनु वंदिंग न निंगर, अन्न नैतु कोडन अंद केटांग सारी
And some came forward to testify, even yesterday they asked permission
अन्न टाइमिंग कागन नान साच्ची ब्रेक पंटन, नैतु उन्हें वारचोलिते, नान इबना यावु वर्दे
And for time I have break this testimony, now I remember it
नान अन्न उन्हें कोना साच्ची सोलियर
And I will testify instead of them
24 अंदे दी, त्यागराज अवरतल ओर मैरिज
And 24 there is a marriage at Tyaagrajubram
निंगला त्यागराज अवरतल रुन दिंग वंदा उन्हें अन्न
And you all have come from Tyaagrajubram
अयके काड़ इबे कल्याण, इबे कोट्टमुडियो उन्ने कुरुपिंग, कुरुपिंगला
At the end of the meeting, the cards issued
निंग यल्लारु कल्याण तक वंदरुंग, नावना सोलियर
And you please come to the marriage and I invite you all
ओर इन्विटेशन कुरुकुनु न वंदरुकांग, अन्न अच्छ केटांग, नैतनाइति इदिकने वंदा निंग वांगल लान सोलिटे, इप्पे प्रसंगत र पाकुम्बो दान, अटनेंस पोटुम्बो दान तेरी वित्यासमान आल्गला वंदरुकांग, विन्तिन कलुच्च
He comes to give invitation and instead of them, I am inviting you, that he'll come here to invite you all to the marriage
नाम मैक्सिमम अलमुन उन्ने अटनेंस पोटुर, यार लावंदरुका, वरलाइ निंग यावला ऊरसुद बेटा, एल्ला लिस्टल क्लियर वंदरो
When I come here immediately take attendance and how many people are attended and how many gone away
इन्हें नाम पार्कुम्बरु, पलय वस्त्रंतरित अवरुल वंदा
And we can see and some have come with the old garments
अन्न मन्से एलाति में त्रिड़ि अर्थ
And he has stolen many things
अब्दीन नंडी, नंडी, उन दे अदामारी फैथमले वेलिया बेटा
And he came by walking and coming to the faith home, there we know nothing
बट अन्न फैथमले ओर कन्नु दिरियाद ओर आल्या पुम्मय रुक
But in the faith home and there was a person who was a blind at all the times
एनी टाइम अंग ओर विश्वासी, कन्नु दिरियाद अवर उल्य करंग, पास्टर्स वच्चिर
At any time, a believer is there who is blind and the pastor
नल्ला जबी पांग, नल्ला जबीकर ओर मन्स
And he is a good prayer warrior
अवकी चर्चला हाल्ल, अन्न मेडी हाल्ल ओर बेंझ रुको, अल्ल न अवर पड़तुरु पर, उकांदुरु पर
And there is a bench in the faith home, the meeting hall and he'll sit and sleep in the bench
अन्नेके अन्न नरंदु
You know what happened on that day?
नाय इन्नो फैथमले दान अंग वंदरुन
I visited to some faith home and I came to that faith home
नाय वेर ओर फैथमले उल्लव
And I was in other faith home
अन्नेक अंग वंद
I came to that faith home
वंदपु अन्न नरंदु
Know what happened on that day?
इन्न अन्न कन्नु दिरियाद अलु, पिन्नले मुडिवटु रुकुटु बेटा
And the blind was taken to the shop to cut his hair
रंबा वेलार रुन अन्न, नान अंद बेंझला पाइ पड़त
So I slipped on the bench
इवन अन्न इन्द अलु अडिकिडी वर्रा अलु बोल्डुंग, कन्नु दिरियाद अलु पड़तुरुकानी अन्ने नरंच्चा, मुडिवंडा
And he used to often come to the faith home and he thought that I was a blind and was sleeping there
अन्ने ब्लाइंड मन सोलिय, सारी बेंझला पड़तुरुका, इद अलु कन्नु दिरियाद अंद नाम पात्तुकिटे रुका, अवलति एडितुकिटे रुक
And thinking that he was a blind man and he was started to take things
नाम पड़तुकिटे पात्तुकिटे, ओहो, आयन बन, इन आयन बक्स मुट्टी किले एडितु वच्चे शीटलार एडितु वच्चे, चॉप्टर प्लेट, टम्बलर एडितु वच्चे, राइट ओके इन्ने नल्ला एडिकर, नान पात्तुकिटे रुकर, अवन अन्ने ओरिजिनल कुरुड़ना वे नरंच्चा
I lying down and he taught me an original blind and was looking, taking all the bed sheets and plates
इप्पु करेसले वेलिया बयाच
Now he gone away
फैथमले वेलिया पोन ओडने काल्ल उल्ला कट्टा वेगमा आउकर
When he gone out of the faith home and he was removing the bands from his legs
काल्ल ओर बिरय बैंडज इर्क, नंडी, 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 अभ्ययु वंदर
And there was a big bandage in his legs and he came by walking
वेलिया पोन ओडने पातिंग न, एल्ला बैंडज आउदिता, सुम्मा पोराम पार्गे, एक्सप्रस मारी पोरा, एना पिचर कुराद फल, पुरै पोका पस्टांकु बेटा
When he went out of the faith home and was running to the west and he was keep running
नाव ओर पायन अनिपी, अवर कुटु वंद
I sent the boy and to call him back
इल्ल, अवसरम अन्नो रुर अर्थु पोनु नाव वर्मुड़िया
And he said urgently I want to go some other place, I could not come
तिरिम्बी पिच कुटु वंदुनु चुकुंग
And if I called him back
इवनला इन्द पलय वस्त्रंतरित अवरुगल, वेशंबोरुकर
And they that are having the old garments and they come in the different form
इप्पडिता गिबियोनियर्गल वंदे, इन्द योशुवा अट चोनांग, नागला रंबो दूरतल वंदवु, अंग पोटुम्बो द पुदू ड्रस रुन इप्पु निंग वंदवुने अब्दीन आयुपच्चे, पलस आयुपच्चे, वेलापट्टे, अभ्य पनीलपट्टे अब्दीन आयुपच्चे अब्दीन ओडनु न योशुवा पात्ता, पाव, यरकस्वाव, अब्दीन नम्मी आमंदु
And Joshua is so merciful and looking and hearing all the words of this Gibeonite selling that they had only word garments and he had mercy towards them
नम्मलु कोड ओर सिलर यप्पोमो ओर ड्रस, अब्दीन पोटु सुथरालुंगला निंग बाकल
Even our people we can see and they will come, they roam around with some garments
बाइबिलले ओवर सूनलाईको ओर ड्रस रुक
In battle for every situation and there are some garments
इप्पुमु कोडन अंद कल्चर फारिनले इर्क
Even this culture is maintained in foreign countries
अना इन्गिब बाइबिलला अद तेलिवार रुक
But it is clearly mentioned at the Bible
रण्डु सामुल, पत्तम्बो रण्डुला पार्कुम्बरु, तुक्का वस्त्रम, तुक्का पड़ुगरुवंग, ओर वस्त्रम बोरुवांग
In second Samuel chapter 9 verse 2 and we can see and they that are sorrowful, aggrieved and they will wear some garments
इल्लावु तन रण्डु राजाकल 25, 21 अंबरु
And 25 and 19 of 6, first kings
रण्डु राजाकल निंग वंदरु, सारी रण्डु सामुवेल, 14 रण्डा पार्ग तुक्का वस्त्रंगले उडितु कोंडु, ओर बिन अंगे वंदे, एलवु कोंडाडुकरे लुपोल वेशंबोटाय
And one woman came in the conform of these garments and came till morning the day
रण्डु राजाकल 25, 21 अंबरु
25, 29 of second kings
ओर राजावारुना, अव चिकी कोंडु बुरु, अवनकी सरैचालय वस्त्रम कुरुकप्पट्टद
And he was a king when he was entangled and the present garments are given to him
अब्बा पलय वस्त्रम, तुक्का वस्त्रम, अदेनरतले सरैचालय वस्त्रमु उडितुन अवरुगल इर्कर
And there are some of the old garments and mourning apparel and the present garments were given to them
इप्पुमु निंग जायलल पोनिंग न, अंद अंद कईदिवलुडे तंडनेगल केटु नम्मा ड्रस रु
Even today when you go to prison and you can see according to the punishment or judgment, the garments are differentiated
आयुल कईदिवलुके न ओर ड्रस रुक
And they that are having for long period and they have some garments
अवुंगलकुनो ओर नंबर लांगुरु रुपांग
A number is given to them
इन्दिकि ओनुडे वस्त्रम एप्पुरियरुकर
Today, how are your garments?
आदियाहमु 38, पत्तम्बो दे पार्कुम्बरु
When we look at the Genesis chapter 38
पुर्षन, पुर्षन ए इलंदा ओर बिन पोडुकर, ओर ड्रस ऐ चोली रुक
And the one who lost the husband and the woman having apparel is mentioned
तनरे कईम बेन्मय कुरिय, अवर वस्त्रंगले उडितु कोंड
And she put on the garments of friends' fame
इन्दिकि इंदुकल निंग इदा पाकल
And you can see this in the
पुर्षन, पुर्षन अरुंदु, अवुंगलके, सिलके सरंगाचरंगल चेंज, इप्पडिता ड्रस उडितुनुंगर ओर मोरमय वच्चर
And they are having some way or having some principle if the husband dies and they have to come on these garments such rituals are placed in windows
अना इन्दिकि इंदुकल कोण उर्पोक्क वादिगल अलमुन बुरु, अंद पारमरित ओढकर
But some reformers when they came forward and they have broke this, all these rituals
याकोब रण्डामतिकार रण्डावसनतल पाकुम्बो
When we look into James chapter 2 verse 2
आलयत्तुको वरुकर, मिनुक्कान वस्त्रम पोडुकर, ओर कोटते अंगे सुटीकाट्ट
And we can see and they that are coming in the goodly apparel and they come to the church
इवन चर्चिको वरुम्बो एप्पुरिवर
When they come to the church, have they come?
कोन मोदुरुमु मिनुकुल वस्त्रमु तरितु रुकर ओर मन्स अंगे उल्लेवरुकर
A man come to assembly, a man with gold ring and good glee apparel
अना चर्चला मिनुकुल वस्त्रमु के दान रंबो मरिपु कुरुकरु, अगे चोलपड़गर
And it is said that they come in the goodly apparel and more important importance is given to them
अना बाइबिल वेर एसकील 28 मतिकार अन्न सोलुगर
But in Book of Ezekiel chapter 28, what is
ओनुडे मिनुक, ओनुडे न्यानते कडुकुम अंद सोलियर
And it is said that and your standing will reflect your wisdom
आविकुरिया वाल्केल वंदितु बर
After coming to the spiritual life
एसकील 28, 17
28, 17 of Ezekiel उन नारे नाव, उन इर्दय एम एटिमय आइच्चे, उन मिनुकीनाव, उन न्यानते कडुत
नी मिनुक्कान वस्त्रम पोल्ला, अना नी न्यानते कडुक आरंभिपाय
And you can fakam in the goodly apparel and it may corrupt your wisdom
इन्दिकि एतने वेर इप्पुरिपट्टा वस्त्रंगले निंगल उडितु कुलुगर
Today how many are putting on such garments?
ओनुडे वस्त्रम दान, ओनुडे जीवियतुनुडे प्रदिबलिप
Your garments is the reflection of your life
अन्नला दान आविकुरिया वाल्केल वंदितु बर, नम्मडे वस्त्रम रंबो गवनमाह इर्क
So after coming to the spiritual life, our garments must be very careful
नान करेसिया वेलय वस्त्रतु कोरुव निंग अब्बा वेलय उडितुनु लांबरिसूत अवनांक केपिंग, मिनिस्टर लां, एल्ला एमल्य एमल्य दान पोटुरुकर, अब्दीन निंग केकला
And at last I come to the white garments and you should not ask the question, coming in white garments are they pure and holy? Even the ministers are coming in the white garments
ड्रसलुके पेरे, मिनिस्टर वाइट अब्दीन लान रुच
And the Christian name is called as the minister
क्रिस्टियन वाइट लाल, मिनिस्टर्स लाम पोटुरुनाल, अद के न पेरे? मिनिस्टर वाइट इन्लाल पेर वंद
And so they are called as the minister whites still they come in the white garments
अब्बा ड्रस वच्चे दान ओरुतुन, अंद कालतले तिर्मानिकर, ओर पलकर वंद
And keeping only the dress or looking into the garments and they're able to रिचिसर दो पीपल
नेतीमुलिगल याला मतिकारम, पत्तावसनतल पार्कुम्बरु, ओर बिनुडे स्टाइल अन्न अव कैरक्टर अन्न अंकर, इद वच्च कंटुपरिकला, अव ड्रस वच्च कंटुपरिकल
And looking unto the woman, the style of the woman and we can look unto the character through the garments, Proverbs chapter 7 verse 10
वेसीन आड़ि आवरणम तरित्य ओर बिन्ने कंडेन
Let them meet him, a woman with attire of a harlot and
अव पोटुरुके ड्रसलिये, अव कैरक्टर अन्न, अब्दीन अंकर रुक, बाइबिल सोल
The Bible says and we can identify the character of the woman, how she attires
अदलाला दान अवुंग ड्रस वंद रंबो गवनमाह रुक
So your garments must be very careful
अवुंग ड्रसला दान अवुंगडे परिसूततिन ओर पोशन मरंज
Your portion, one part of the holiness portion is vested or hidden in the garments
देवीगत्तुनुडे ओर पगुदी अवुंडे ड्रसला मरंज
The one part of the divineness is hidden in your garments
अवुंडे देवीगत्तुनुडे ओर प्रदिबलिप अदुकुल इर्क
The reflection of your divineness is inside the garments
अदलाला दान नम्म ड्रसका अधिक मुख्यतु उन्गुरुतुर अद वेंडा, इद वेंडा, इप्पडिपोड, इप्पडिपोड, इप्पडिपोड अद इप्पडिपोड तप्प, इप्पडिकला नम्म सोल
So we are giving more importance for dressing ourselves in our garments and must have come in this way And you must modestly, you must have this garments
इप्पुमु गुड यूनिवर्सिटीसला लांक कोंडु दांग, उड़ेगले के न उंडे, कटुपाड़ वेनुन सोल
Even in universities and they brought some rules and regulations for the garments
नाव उन्हें की सोलियर
And have told you
नम्मडे विश्वासी बोन्नो ओर सेकंड ईयरला कॉलेजिकु पोमाटन सोलिट
A believer girl in secondary, she said I do not go to college
सर, अव अम्मा को अलुकुन प्रचन्यला पोमाटकरालुन योस
Now it's not because of the problem between father and mother, she is not attending the college
अदिप्प अवलको ओर प्रचन्य अकड़
And studying is not a problem for her
एन्ना अद मूल लाल नल्ला रुक
Because her brain is well
नल्ला रिसेल्ट लांक काईल वच्चिर
And she had good results in her hands
बट कॉलेजिकु पोमाटकर
But she still don't want to go to college
केटाना अंद कॉलेज दान, केटाने इंद कॉलेज चेतु वटिंग, इप्पडिये कारसोलिटेर
And if she asked to her and she used to tell, "I am for that college but you made me to join in this college"
अव अप्पा वंदे अब्बो, ओर बिरय बैंकला जीम रुद
And his father was a GM in the bank
अव अड्यूस्ट्रेटल रुद
And he was the next other
अवर फोन मनी पास्ट कोण यपार्गे, इव अव कॉलेज के पोमाटकर
And he called past her and informed and she is not attending the college
नान पोई बेसन
I spoke to her
मुदला अव उम्मी य सोल्वे इल
And in the beginning she was not telling the truth
नान कालज वामा, अन्न कालज विडिकल, अन्न कालज विडिकल, फ्रेंड्स ओतुरल, इप्पडिये न जोलिट
I dislike the college, I dislike the friends and this is what she will keep on telling
करेसले उम्मी य केटु बुरु सोन
At last when I asked the truth, she said to me
अन्नके लास्ट बर्थडे के ओर विश्वासी, ओर चुड़ीदार वायिकुर्तांग
And for my last birthday, a believer got me a new chudita
नान अद पोटु कॉलेजिकु पोन
I wore the garments, I went to college
अंग कॉलेजिकु बस वंदे, काल्ल आरु बत्तुको वंदरो, एले मुकल कुल्ला रिकिर
My sister and the college bus arrived and she will go to college with 7:45
अना अंगे काल्ले साप्पड़ु, मतिना साप्पला उंड
And if she go and she will have the morning breakfast and lunch in the college
इव अरंगिपो वंदे, अन्द कॉलेज ओर डायरेक्टर नंद
And then she departed to the college, went to the college, a director of the college stood in the college
अयरकनकान, पायंगलु, मुनुगलु बिगिटे रुक
And thousands of girls and boys, they were going to the college
अव अरु निनुडे, अब बांग्यवां सोन
He watched her and called her, "Come here"
इद अन्न ड्रस
And what dress is this?
इद अन्न ड्रस नी पोटुरु
And what dress you are dressed in?
इवलक ओनुमय वाडल
And she could not do anything
ओटुरु चुड़ीदार, अना अंद स्लीव्स एंग कटिंग इडुपुकु माला कटिंग
And the cutting is near hip and she was wearing the chudita
चुड़ीदार वंदे, स्लीव्स वंदे कटिंग एंग इर्क इडुपुकु माला इर्क
The cutting in the sleeves is near the hip
यां कॉलेज अकडुकुल्ल कुन वंदरुक, अब्दीन वो, नी इप्पु वंद ओन्ने, अव पिन्नले ओर नल्लु वरुआ कॉलेज रमन लल्ला रुक, इदान अवुंग लास्ट वानिंग
And he said to her, "And this is the last warning to corrupt all the children, you are coming in these garments"
वेर ओनु लाल, सत्यबमा कॉलेज दान
And no the college, it is Satyabhamma College
आड़ि बेट इद बिल, यल्लारु मतिल न सोनु वंदे, वेकपट्टे, इन्नी इद कॉलेज पोमाटन मुडिव
And she was shaken, I could not do anything further and I will never come to the college here
नान जोना अन्यारु न ड्रस पोर्स
I asked him, "Why you own these garments?"
नान जोना पेंटिकस ड्रस ना केकला, इप्पु अवन जोलरल्ला, रोडला बरला जोलरल
When we Pentecostal people are advising you, you will not hear, but those who come in roads and they were informing and pressing you
नावांगल, अंद आंटी य बर्थडे के वायिकुर्त
I did not purchase the garments and
आंटीय, अंकल, अम्मा, तंगचीय, वायिकुरुकरु, ओड़ंगान ड्रस वायिकुरु
Auntie or mother and whoever may be and when you're giving the purchasing address, it must be the good garments
इद चच्चे, मिनुक्कान वस्त्र उडितुनु न आउसील, इद वंद फैसन शॉप नरत्र रामुन कड़ेद, गेटवक नरत्र रामुन कड़ेद
And this is a church and you should not come in the goodly apparel and this is not the place to come in the bright garments and corrupt others
इद देवन, मनिदन इस संदिकर
This is the place where God meets the men
इन्द अर्थल नी वरुम्बरु तन मिनुक्कान वस्त्रमो, इल्लावु ततगुदीलाद वस्त्रमो पोटु वर, इन्त्र एंट्र आउप
When you come to this place and you should not come in the unmodest garments or shining or the good apparel
अन्द बिन्न पात्तु ओडने, वेसीन आड़ि आवरणम तरित्य, अब्दीन न बाइबिलले सोलियर
The Bible says clearly, "And the harlot attires in the garments"
ओर सिलर अब्दील, यप्पु तोकिर अद ल यप्पुमे अलुकावे, पोटुसुथ केटामनिव तोकिलमा, अम्मा तोकिलम नी तोकिर अद कुनकन्न, अद की ट्रेनिंग कुरुकुन अवुंग बिलियल कुंग
And some says that and they will not wash the clothes and you must give the train of your children to wash the garments
ओर ड्रस तोकिर अद के ड्रस, तुनी तोकिर अद के ट्रेनिंग कुरुकरुल सोरु बंगरुके ट्रेनिंग कुरुकरुल, कल्याण मंडरुम्मट्टो, कल्याण कट्टियोचर अंग पोन तुनी तोकिकुनो, सोरु बंगुनो, रण्डुम चेलन न अडिप समा नल्ला रिटर्न टिकट वायिन, वंदे विल्ला उकांदु अन्ने अडिच्चा, एद कडिच्चा, तुनी तोकिर अद दान वासिंग मिशन नान ओन्न वायिकुरु रुक
You train them not to wash the clothes and cook the rice and do the other works And when you're getting the marriage to them and they will come back within three days because they don't know to wash the clothes, cook the rice And instead you tell and you're given in the washing machine towards the clothes
चर्चिको वरुम्बो द, यल्ला अलुकले सुथराल्ला रुक, अद ओर स्पिरिट
And that is the spirit and some
नल्ला गवन तंदेर बट्टला पास्स, सालमुन ओर विशास तोरत
And then they appeared, when Pastor Solomon cast him with a demon
अव पेर अन्न केटार
And he asked, "What does your name?"
अम्म पेर असुत्तम, अब्दीन
And it says uncle
विशास के पेर असुत्तम, यद रामसामी, मीनाची काना कामची, नत्य अन्न उन्न सोलुन, बता असुत्तम अब्बनी एन्न अन्न इट रुक
And what you're doing when telling the name but still it is filthy
कुलिके वेडमात
And never allow him to
तुनी तोकिके वेडमात
And never allow to wash the clothes
पात्रंगल वेडमात
We never allow them to wash
वीड़ सुत्तम मन्न वेडमात
We never allow to the
अम्म पेर अन्न अम्म पेर असुत्तम
And my name is filthy
अवुंग विल्ले यार कारी इप्पुरिपट्ट
And just chicken see, there is something so you
अब्दीय तुनी ओर वच्चा, ओर पायन जिनाला, आयु स्मल एडिच, विडुकला वरुलाम, अब्दीय इन्न इन्न अन्न ओ, तोकिके वेल इल्ल
If you don't soak the clothes and you will not wash for 15 days and you should tell and for 15 days we are not washing the garments
पादी विडुले के विजिटिंग बोवो दान, तोडपत्ति वेमात नाकालील न न सोलिकुंडे रुकर, यारमय फरक वेल
And for any of the people when they go for the visiting and they will come and sweep the room
अगाह, डेली उल्य करन, बास्तु उल्य करन, वंदितेर अव विडकु चुतमनु, चुतमनु रुक
Will servants of God come every day to your house to clean your houses
पास्टी ओर ओर फैथमल
Pastor to you attended the faith home
बाथरूम वन
And he went to bathroom
यूस्पनाम वेलिया वंद
And without using, he came out
ओर जोमन नार, कलमनार, अव अम्म लाइफ सरिकर
He prayed and departed saying, "Your life is not proper"
अव लाइफ सरियार न, बाथरूम सरियार
If your life is proper, the bathroom will be
इवन जीव इन सरिल, अन्नला दान अवुंडे बाथरूम अम्म असुत्तम वायिकुर अदु कोड़ जय दिरियाद, अब्दीन उल्य करन
His life is not proper, so the bathroom is not clean and he said, "And how he can become a servant of God?"
स्पिरिटला पल इर्क अन्ने कुलिके वेडम, चाप्पड़ वेडम, अन्ने प्लेट कलु वेडम अब्दीय अलुकुले, ओकार विक अद अवुंग ओर इंटरेस्ट, अंद चाकड़ीकुल रुकर, अन्न बार्गन, अंद स्मल अवुंग तेर
And there are many things of the spirit and they are still inciting, uncleanless and filthy things And they still sit in the garbage, other dishes
सकरिया मूनामतिकार, मूनावसनतल, अलुक्क वस्त्रम तरित्य अवन आग ओर प्रदान आसार्यन, देवन्दे सनीदानत्तक वंद बुरु इन्द अलुक्क वस्त्रते कारण काट्ती, सात्तान अवुंग के तिंग से यमुरिया अवुंग के कुरे वंद निन
In Zechariah chapter 3 verse 3 and we can see a priest came in the filthy garments stood before angel And he came in the reason telling to Satan and he was in the filthy garments who came and was waiting in him
अद अलुक्क वस्त्रता मात्तुन पर, दान सात्तान पोन अन्न बाइबिल सोल
The Bible says when he changed his filthy garments and the Satan fled away from him
निंग विशास पिच ओडर अलुला लांपार
And see looking at the
विशास पिच ओडर अलुला लांपार
And see they
कुलिके मात
They will not take bath
ड्रसला कलिज अद पोटु अलुक्का सुथ मीसी इन ताड़ियो ओन्न एडिकम अल्ल, बोव नी देवन्दे आले अद कुरुमु, इप्पुरिरा कुराद
They go in torn garments and they will not have the shaving and shaving the hairs or doing any work And they will go like a filthy person
तन सरैचालय वस्त्रम माटी, तन्ने मुकते सवरमन्नी कोंड वंद योशेब एंग वंदा, सिंगासनत्तक वंदा
And keeping himself pure and digging out, removing the present garments and he came to the throne
कथुरे सनीदानत्तकु बोवो द, नी फ्रेश्स वर्ण
When you come to the presence of God, you must come very officially
नी पलय वस्त्रंतरित, वेसीन आड़ि आवरणम तरित्य, अलुक्क वस्त्रंतरित सरैचालय वस्त्रतोड़, नी उल्लेवर कुराद
Putting on the old garments and putting on the garments of the harlot And coming in such kind of present garments and you should not come to the presence of God
कथुरे परिसूत नामके में मूंद आवदा
May the God's Holy Name be glorified
And for the children of God, for the whiteness, I am going to tell the spiritual nature of it.
Aymbatthi oram sanghidaam yelaavasanam.
Songs fifty-one verse seven.
Ah, Aymbatthi ondru yel.
Neereenle eesupinaasutigariyum apurudhanan sutthamaavee. Edi kaluviyarilum apurudhanan urayindamalayilum venmayavee.
Oru devanidya pillai devanayipola urayindamalayipola venmayam arunna na modalaavudhu aanukulusutthiiripu avashe.
A child of God, when he have become shed whiter than snow and first thing, important thing is that they must be sanctified or sanctification.
Sutthiirikappadada yavunum kantsoriyipona kurudan endru rendu pedri onnu solugaradu.
And second Peter chapter one verse two says, and thee that are unsanctified are blind.
Rendu pedri onnu pathrani niga bakala sutthiirikappattadi marandu boonavun kantsoriyipona kurudan.
And we can see in second Peter chapter one verse ten, and thee that are sanctified not, and thee are blind.
Oru sutthiiripu daa oru manidhanai venmayaga maachakoodiya.
A purging or sanctification is changing a man white.
Avr oliyai prakashatay, milliyavastaratay, avr vastaramaga tarithirukkara.
His light and he was shining in his apparel and he put on the garments as his wine.
Andha whitenessugani varunna na modalaavudhu sutthiiripu paichshiviken.
If you need to come through that whiteness and you must first practice this sanctification.
Idita esaya onnu padinathila solirukkaradu ungal paavangal sivairendru ndaalum adu urayindapanjayipola venmayaa.
If there is said in book of Isaiah chapter one verse eighteen, even your sins may be a scarlet and it may be white as snow.
Paavattha arikkeedradhalu ninga waitpanakuraadu.
And you should not wait to confess your sin.
Paavattha vidugiradhalu ninga waitpanakuraadu.
And you should not wait to lick your sin.
Oru devanidya pillai kulli appudhu oru sutthiiripu nandukittaiyirukkana.
And there must be sanctification taking place as child of God always.
Ninga naam prasangam alla ninga prasangakkaekala, kettikittirukkumbulu dey oru vaartavunakka touchaachina appumeyunni balibirathila vacharnu.
I can preach and you can hear the sermon with the word is touching you and you must keep the Bible for the alternate message.
Edi touchpondu adani karakta porujikittu oranayandavare naa iditnandukkuraadu stotra. Abidina podu, andhenertlai enna kadakio, adamaatam udainu.
What touches you and you have the immediate confess and then will be taken change take place immediately in you.
Idita yoavan padinijumoolai eesupesinar.
And this is what John chapter fifty three, the Lord speak to him.
Enna pesinaru?
What he speak?
Ipodudu ningal ketta ubadesetinale ipumeyunni sugthamaariyaa.
And you are being sanctified for the doctrines that you have heard now.
Kekkumbulude oru sutthiiripu undakarudhu daa unmayana parisuttham.
When you hear, when the sanctification comes and that is the true sanctification.
Yoavan padanijumoontra.
Naan ungalukusundha ubadesetinale, ningalipodude sugthamaayirukkariyaga.
Ipodude ninga sugthamaayi, prasang kettikittirukkumbulu dey unakkula matthonda idirukkana.
Now you are clean through the word when you are hearing the sermon.
Adhalav modalaavudhu venmai apidinkaradu unuday sutthiiripu adangirukkara.
The first whiteness, your sanctification is inside it.
Ah, unadhaavudhu unadhaavi kuriyavalkaila ni white ponnugurudhu satthiyoh, sattham.
It is true or it is the law that you have to come in white garments in spiritual life.
Iduvariki ninga edutha kallarallu ninga uttiruga.
And until now, whatever colors garments you have taken, you leave.
Inime white edupanu oru poruthanabundigala.
Hereafter you take a vow that I will take white garments.
Innakee allarupayoor white and white laadha usutthunna naan cholla varala, sunday serviceugani na white and white pooduvaandavare, appidu oru pradistha.
I am not telling that you have to come in white garments with all the times, but at the time of sunday service, I will come in the white garments and you must take this consecration.
Ah, inime edukkara dress na white eduttukkara.
And hereafter I will purchase the white garments.
Adutu bible sharike na white and white pooduvan.
Then in the bible study, I will come in white garments.
Adukkaraadu kaathirpoodukkana white and white pooduvan.
Then I come to the tarrick meeting in white garments.
Ipudhi oru rendu mune vasathukulla, nee enga undurva, pure cloud.
With the two or three years and you will come to purity of pure whites.
Veetlaarkumbulu dey ninga var dress kalladros pootukkala, valasigimbulu dey uniform, college, adhalu ninga dress pootukka, thadaiyala, thavala.
When you stay at house and you can stay, have this white other garments and it is not hindrance to you.
Ah, naan vendu uniform poodamattain, naan white and white poodumidiyaka pradistha pannirukken, enne school ponnina veliyapoduva.
When you go to school, we are telling that I will come in white garments if I consecrate myself, but they will chase you out.
Anga poodu.
You can wear there.
Onakkupoodukkenga engalavaaiipu kadakio, angalava white poodu.
And wherever you are getting chances to come, go in white garments and you must put you on, put on the white garments.
Ah, indike ethanu veerabidungala maachamudi.
And how many can change your stuff like this?
Ah, settita muttunamalanga allar white and white poodutuvarana, bavo, padil pesamataamla.
If they die and they put on the white garments because he will not reply anything.
Namaviswasi pa chethitarunna namayena padra, avo olungilavun jethubitaakuda, pastor ninga onda adakamadunna, patha pona anegi patha, avr swami sagisala edutu, alaga pure viswasiyapaduthu.
If the believer dies and they will dress themselves and white garments and taking the message and he will be a pure believer.
Yarandaavudhu unudaya poruthanai, unai venmayaa.
Secondly, your vows will make you pure.
Ulambal naalamadigara yelaavasanate parkumbuludhu.
Looking on to Lambeth Christian chapter four verse seven.
Ulambal naluyel.
Avaluday nasarayyar urayindamalayiparkilum sutthamum, paali parkilum venmayum.
Avaluday nasarayyar paali parkilum venmayaga maruvarkay.
The Nazarites were purer than snow.
Nasarayyan kadadu oru virada oru poruthanai kanbikaradu.
And Nazarite source and it is wow.
Ennaagamo aara madigarathra ninga adaparkamudi.
You can see in book of Numbers chapter six.
Ah, anga ningal fulla nasarayyaradhu paditulup subject.
And it is subject of the verb of the Nazarites.
Apidu idundene enna valingikoltra.
What do we understand from this?
Oru devanidya manushana, avan sutthiirikumbulu du unakkuvvenmai kadakiradu.
When a child of God, when he is sanctifying and he is getting that whiteness.
Sutthiirikumbulu daa automatika avr dress maari.
When he sanctifies and garments are changed automatically.
Adutu tanney poruthanai kuudpadi thikolludhal.
And they are subjecting himself under this vow.
Oru viswasiyikinni sela pradistha erkku, uyya karangalikkinni sela pradistha erkku.
There are some consecration for believers and for the servants of God.
Adu ovanun devan onodu edaybudukkara vedathai poruthada.
And it is according to the matter how the Lord deal with them.
Avaluday nasarayyar, avargal paali parkil venmayaga mari nakar.
Her Nazarites were whiter than milk.
Appidipatta oru tanma irukkai.
And such as nature.
Pradistha unai venmayam maathu.
Consecration will make you white.
Pradisthae unai venmai vastra uduthukkudi avanai uruvaakku.
Consecration will form you or make you or mold you to come in white garments.
Adiyagamum naapati onbadhamadigaram pani rendaavasanate parkumbuludhu.
We look on to forty-nine twelve of Genesis.
Anga enna cholla padukkara.
What is said there?
Yudavai pathi cholla padavaa warthai enna?
It is said about Chudam.
Avan kandil tracherasatina syavapayum, avan parkil paali naal venmayayum irukku.
Avanudaya parkal paali naal velleyagadu, abidina enna artha, pal kudicha, paal allavellayaradu, abid, paadivarku manjalaarku, paadik, karpaarku, paadik arichirukku, abria.
His teeth white with milk and it is meaning that and have, when you are drinking milk, will your teeth will.
Paali naal avanudaya parkal venmayaa arukonna, vasanathinimitto avde warthai parisutthamaay maru.
His teeth white with milk means that through his word and his words will be changed as white.
Unuday vaayilindu varavarthu unai parisutthavana imuruvaakku.
The words that proceed out of your mouth will make you a holy one.
Unuday warthaisutthamaani maatikideyavandina life change aikideyavaro.
If you change your words, it is a pure words and you will keep on changing it.
Unuday warthaisutthailana, av life sugthamillana artha.
If the words are not pure and your life is not pure.
Onakkadu andu venmai kadakiaadu.
You cannot get that whiteness.
Adhalala daa warthaya rambakavanamaa kondurun.
So you must keep paying attention in the words.
Unkarke un parkal paalil kaluvaputtadu pola venmayaa irukkana.
And your teeth must be white as with, cleansed with milk.
Adu unuday onavai kattukkaradu, unuday warthaya kattukkaradu, unuday vaayaya kattukkaradu, unuday udathai kattukkaradu, unuday vaay, unuday irudhitulindu purapadukkara, palakariyengalai adukkanbikaradu.
It shows your mouth, your lips and the words that proceed out of your mouth and here again.
Idita namudaya jeevithla venmai kinni adutu step.
And this is the next step of an ala white and the whiteness.
Ninga parangai indike white ta maatharaduki avalovalikalae kandupichikka.
Today you can see and they have made many ways to change it to white.
Onguveetla ninga sugar useponnuninga, pacha papa, velavaleedhurukko, ana original sugar enna irukkadi, indakallarla, irukkadi. Idha chemical kudduthu, 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 kudduthu maathiyabri kundukkara, white kundukkara.
And the termites are.
Vidyasamaana white ikondukkara.
It may be in white color and you are giving some allegation and it is completely turned into different whites.
Adugala namadressa abidita.
Our dress is also like.
Over bleaching processla, poga, 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 idanudaya whiteness maritavaru.
When it goes under different bleaching process and this whiteness is changed.
Adugala unudaya sugthamaagudal, unudaya pradisthae, unuday vaayilindu varukkara warthegal, katupadukkada patta warthegal, ivygal unai venmayaa kukkara.
Your purging, your cleansing, your consecration, the words that proceed out of your mouth that makes you white.
Matthew padinayalirendu marbadike naa konduruvaa.
Once again, let us come back to Matthew chapter seventeen.
Jabam oru manidhanai venmayaa kukkara.
The prayer will change a man white.
Avargalukka munbaga marubamaanar, aver mugam suriyani pola prakashikadu, aver vastaram velchitipola venmayayi.
Adukmudanaavasanam.
Aarun aalikke bindu eesu peedravayum yaakobayum, avaruday sahodarinagi yovaniyin kutti kondu, tanithirukkupadi uyirindamalayin main poyi. Hmm. Avargalukka munbaga marubamaanar.
Sorry, Luca onbadu iruvathiyombo dukavanga.
Nine twenty-nine of Luke.
Luca onbadu iruvathiyonbadu.
Avar jabammanugail, averdymugaruba marichu, averdymastaram venmayagi prakash.
Jabba jeevio unuday valkaila venmai ekondurukkaradu.
The prayer life brings whiteness in your life.
Luca onbadu iruvathumbalu teeli varuka, avr jabammanugail, andar soonalai marukkara.
We can see very clearly in book of Luke chapter nineteen verse twenty-nine, when you pray, the.
Unudaya jabavalkai unai venmayaga maatikideyirukkau.
This prayer of life will change you white.
Unuday dressai maathu automatika, abid konjamkonjamalai life change pannikideyavaru.
He change your garments and slow by slow, little by little, automatically changes your life also.
Yavallaran jabikiriyaa?
How long your prayer?
Allapurujikanga, enga veetukkar jabathukvarla, ya manavi jabathukvarla, ya pillaiukkabathukvarla, adhalala naanga jabikilan, nee solakuraadu, onakkuk jeevan kodutukkara, avanavana aththumavuka, avanavanda uttaravadi.
And don't tell reason, my husband, my children, my wife are not coming undertaking the prayers and you are responsible for your own life and soul.
Yada potini kaudapadukkuraadu, jaban narama, nee poimulangalapodtrir, nee uyirooda rendha, veetla rendha mulangalapodtr.
Don't burden about anything if you are alive, if you are staying in house and you must stay on knees and pray.
Ah, onakkadu andha jaban naraadu nee vitraakuraadu, adu daa unai venmayam maathu.
You should not leave the praying time and that will make you white.
Unuday jabavalka koraya koraya nee iruladaindu povaay.
When your prayer life is diminishing or is getting low and you will, your life become darkness.
Yavalo naran jabikiriyaa, avalu prakashavalkaila undha.
How long you pray and your life is enlightened?
Avalu venmai nee marikondayavaruvaay.
And you have changed to that extent of white.
Jabangaradu oru aththumavai oru processukkula kondubora oru sakthi.
A prayer is the power taking the soul into this process.
Ah, chaladukkala, ovunnu ko oru processerkku.
For some things are certain process.
Ipinninga vandiki diesel, petrol lam bodriyaa.
You are putting petrol and diesel for your vehicle.
Idu nara abidya diesel, petrol nu, keelarindu pumpni edutharudhala.
It is not pumping out the petrol or diesel oil from earth.
Abidana, huh? Adu eduthu, adu crude oila, chakkaammaravanga.
It is crude oil, it is like.
Original crude, original crude oila, pathinane edhiva, original chakkaada, orutanikittani kamada.
And when you look on to this original crude oil, it is like a ditch.
Ornal barma bajarla, oralari lapomodu, adu konjam kotitichu.
Doing, glory was traveling to Barma Bhasa and.
Yes, sanavallam valiki ullundu, villam, kajikala odhichiuthuna.
And they that were taking it out and they were falling down by the.
Chakkaamari irukkandu patha, adu enna de, crude oil.
They thought it was a ditch, but it was a crude oil.
Idha processukkala kondubona varakku.
I will have taken to the process.
Idha preedu, over chemical vetcha, onuna pirichu 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 adukkara.
And separating by using some chemicals and they are taking out.
Appidu oru mattho, adukkula undakkadu.
And such a changing is taking place inside.
Yattanam unnaran jabikiriyaa, attanam maninara onakkula matthonda.
How many hours you are praying and to that extent, your life is changed.
Avaththumavala mattho.
And changing in your.
Avuulyathila mattho.
Changing in your.
Avu jeevithla mattho.
Changing in your life.
Avparvila mattho.
Changing in your.
Unuday enngalila mattho.
Changing in your thoughts.
Iveygalallan jabatala naddakkara venmai.
And these are all the thing that happens with the prayer, the whiteness occurs.
Mark onbadhamadigara rendu mune vasanakala parkumbuludhu.
We look on to Mark chapter nine verse two and three.
Adutu tanithirukkumbulu du ulu oru anumavurukkara.
And there is an experience that we are alone.
Adetana Matthew padinayalirendu liyoonliyinamavasichu.
That is what we read in Matthew chapter seventeen verse one and two.
Aarun aalikke bindu eesu peedravayum yaakobayum yovaniyin malithu, uyirindamalayin main, avergali tanii kutti kondu poyi.
Tanithirukkara oru anumavurukka.
And there is an experience that you stay.
Jabat, jabatala rendu pogdi irukkara, paranga, gavaniyaa.
There are two parts of prayer, listen.
Onne amma, apa, purusha, maamiyari, allariyinkutti vandu, ukandu, dammadum, drumbadichu, oru rendu pattu padi, oru naal listu vasichu, idu oru prayer da.
Calling your father, mother, children and calling your family prayer and you have to take drums and you are singing song and praying.
Enna unnarukku?
Another aspect of prayer.
Enna de, tanithirupada.
Staying alone.
Personal prayer.
That is personal prayer.
Ah, oru kattam vandapuludhu, thaniyal, Satrakmecha Kaabathneka, kuupitukondi jabitan.
When one state came and Daniel calls Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego on free.
Ana daily avanukunno oru prayerindixa, adliyargadade, Satrakmecha Kaabathneka allan gadade, even thaniya ondu ukandu, Erislaimukunera, kadav, palakani, thirandu vachsta, porararunchu.
But he had a prayer alone that is seeing the, with Erislaim, it's opening the windows and praying day and night.
Adu kuduma jabo, ida aththuma jabo.
And that is the family prayer and this is the prayer function.
Onakkun, nee undevanu.
And you on God.
Yaakobu, abidipattu oru edathak vandaparada, life la change vandadu.
When James came to that place and changed, take place.
Manavi pillai, aadu, maadu, ellati ora vachithey, tanithu devanoodu nenna.
Keeping apart the wife and children and have everyone, he kept her alone and stood in the place.
Indha tanithu undakkadu jabam, eday undakkau.
And this is a personal prayer and what it makes.
Adu maru rubathai undakkau.
It makes the transfiguration.
Avvalkaila changinga varunna na, tanithi jabambanam.
If you want changes in life and you must pray alone.
Avr tanithi jabamunnu buludhu, avr maru rubamaa kikanbita.
When he prayed apart from themselves and he was transfigured.
Appudhu avarudaya mugam venmayayi mari.
And his face was changed white.
Apidu idundene enna valingikoltra.
What do we understand from this?
Adiyagamum naapati rendu madigara iruvathiyumoonavasanate parkumbuludhu.
When we look on to thirty-two, twenty-three of Genesis.
Iruvathinaanga vasanate parkumbuludhu.
Verse twenty-four.
Yaakobu pindi tanithirundan.
And Jacob and he was with.
Adu daa, anegi daa, avanukki iruvathu oru sa, paagaya maathakoodiya, oru kirubakadachadu.
And there he got the grace to change the hatred that happened for twenty years.
Adu daa, avalvin maru ruba.
And that is the transfiguration of life.
Yara naa bakamattai, yara pesamattai, yar mugatla velikamattainu, ora vittu, oodnaanu, innika avana sandikirukkara varra, innika avanukku, andha edathla thalndubogurukka oru kirubakadachadu, adu daa, avunudaya valvin maru ruba.
To whom I will not meet, that whom I will not speak, that when he had this chance and when he was coming to the place alone and the transfiguration or changes take place in him and that is the transformation.
Thaniyal yela, adutada, thaniyal yela madigara onbadhamavasanate parkumbuludhu.
When we look on to book of Daniel chapter seven verse nine.
Ilavita velipadutal ondru padinan gay parkumbuludhu.
Oh, book of Revelation chapter one verse fourteen.
Andhavudaya sirasai parangai.
And look on to the head of the hellhole.
Elavu.
Avarudaya sirasum mayrum, venpanjayipolavum, urayindamalayipolavum venmayayirundu.
Avarudaya sirasa, venpanjayipola venmayaa.
And his head was white as black bull.
Naantaramaun cholra.
Once again, repeat.
Oru manidhan sutthiirikumbulu du oru venmai undakaradu.
When the man sanctifies, the whiteness comes to him.
Poruthanayakalai saripadutti, thandey valkaila, pradisthae kallapunnu bodi, innu konjam venmaiagadu.
When he sit right to his wolves and make a consecration proper and the whiteness increases.
Warthaya katupadukkamudhu, innu purity varadu.
When you controls his words and still he gets fame and whiteness.
Avunday jabavalka innu venmai ekondurukkada.
And in his prayer life add more whiteness.
Avunday tanithi jabam, maru rubathin venmai avanukulakondurukka.
His personal life or personal prayer is making him the transfiguration of his whiteness.
Indha anjaavudhu stepa thandumbuludhu, aaraavudhu stepa, sindayil venmai.
When he crosses the fifth step and coming to the sixth step and there is a purity or whiteness in his thoughts.
Avarudaya sirasa ebidirundixa, venpanjayipola venmayaa karamdal.
How his head is, and his head is white is like a bull.
Ah, yippudipattu oru venmai, avarudaya sirasala vachchindarpa.
And see what kind of whiteness he had in his head.
Kristova valkaila sindayil parisutthamthava.
And coming to the Christian life and we must have the purity in our thoughts.
Palayarpattla sayalukkakniyayathirupu.
In Old Testament for the deeds or judgments.
Udyipattla sindagalku niyayathirupu.
But in New Testament, the judgment for the thoughts.
Palayarpattil vebatsaran seyapasayadhe, endru ungal cholla padukkada, ningal puruvatharukku cholla padukkada, ningal keluvipadirupiirka.
And you heard to the ancestors, the shit, said to them, commit not adultery.
Naan ungalukku cholukkari, nee eesuchonna.
And Jesus said, I say unto you.
Naan enna cholra?
He says.
Vibacharan seyadan cholala, oru se, oru stree, ichyodu oru un pathitale, avasindaila vibacharamanitaa, abidigala.
And he says that when a man sees a woman with a long thing dressed and he have committed adultery in his mind.
Idhu sindayin venmai thanmai kanbikaradu.
And this shows the purity in thoughts.
Sirasa, avarudaya, avarudaya sirasa ebidirukkaradu.
How his head is?
Yelaavada.
Seventhly.
Idhu daa, purunamana pure white, adukpara, aduk, eeedu inayi kadayadu.
And this is the pure white and there is no comparison or there is no comparison with it.
Idipeninga indi parangala, indi erukkara brothers pottukkara white dressukka, sisters pottukkara white dressukka, ovunnu ko oru uyya karangalapodukkaliye white lennerukka, konjam balasana, konjam dimmaarukka, konjam allathavakilana, abid shop water oru, kaay potte duthu vanta, adukke etamari, adu oru map, map, map potte duthu, kanditukka, ibidi, ibidi, allar kundavare, allar dress pottukkiginga white, konjam ivoryirukka, onu dimirukka, onu lighta, really chand, sandalallarukka.
All are in white garments and you can see some differentiation in the white garments that you are wearing that.
Iruka, appidu idiliyae vidyasar.
And there is difference in it.
Idheepola venmai le, konjamkonjamal, ninga purunathukvaru.
And likewise in whiteness and slow by slow or little by little, you must attain the perfection.
Ah, abidu varumbuludhu, onununnu steptha naa ipongalukichonna.
When you are coming and step by step, I have told you this.
Seventh step.
Seventh step.
Velipadutal monamadigara aindavasanam.
Revelation chapter three was fine.
Velipadutal mune raiindhal enna solirukkaradu.
And what is said in book of Revelation chapter three was fine.
Jayangolugaravane venno, avanukku venvastaram taripikapadu.
Ah, jaya jeeviam oru venmai kanbikaradu.
Overcoming life shows the whiteness.
Idhu daa, final round.
And this is a final round.
Ah, namalanga, first round, second round, laadishu, adupar, vallakadikamavilak, anganukanduka, ennan katta, adutarounde koopadla.
And some, they comes the first round and second round and last round, they are not calling them.
IT fieldla erukkara ungalitiriyoo, indha companyla interview poru ungalitiriyoo, first round pass, second round pass, third round pass, adutarounde HR koopadavame mottakala.
And they that are in IT field, they know first round, second round pass and final round, HR will not call them.
Abidana, ah, idheemari namukis, venmai kis seven roundrige.
For whiteness, there are seven rounds.
Yelaavudhu rounde jaya jeeviam.
And seventh round is overcoming life.
Jayangolugaravan yavunno, avanukku venvastaram taripikapadu.
And he that overcome and shall be clothed with the white garment.
Indha white daa, anga singhassana threveetukkara white kinni de, equal.
And this white is equal to the one who sat on the throne and not comes.
Mattho white la enna varadu, mattho white la konjam dimmatikideyada varuva.
And other white garments will go dimintim.
Ah, allapurujikanga, satyathavirni valingikolpa, naa viswasiyakara.
I believe that you are understanding the truth well.
Ah, abidu sindayil orutan jayichu varra, abidina, avan jayichta.
If you want overcome the thoughts and he was the overcomer, conqueror.
Ah, avanudaya jaya jeevio, avari singhassana threveetukkara, andar, parlavuttilirukkara, velayangi teritha, oru kutthadu, unai enachu.
His overcoming life will take you or mingle with you, the one group of people, there is head on the throne, there are overcomers.
Toodargal, venngi taritha, allayindar.
Now the angels, they were the one, they were the.
Angarukkara, parisutthavangal, velayangi taritha, allayindar.
And the saints of God, they were clothed in white garments.
Singhassana threveetukkara, venvastaram tarithirukka.
He that is sitting on the throne and having this white garments.
Ah, indike ethanayar mudibadukiriyaa?
How many are taking decision?
Paravam, prasangikku varuvam, yelaavadu, onbadhamadigara, etavasanam cholukkaradu, unvasaram yippudhum, idukke, adayalamai, inime laadu, white and white poodu.
Let us come back to, at least, step nine verse eight, at least you come back to the white garments, you try yourself.
First step, eduthu vayi.
You must take a first step.
Neekonjam initiate panni varunna.
Must initiate yourself and must come forward.
Mayarchi konjamadu edukkana.
You must try a little.
Naan vendu chachi kavitandu pooduva, veliyavandu, collegekala, varar dress potta.
I, when I come to the church, I used to come in white garments, when I go to college, I go in colored garments.
Enne roadla badhu oru viswasiyapay choli kuttuva.
And looking on to me in the road and he will.
Enne inje varumada, white and white varra, veliyavai parangai, enna anta.
And he comes inside, he comes, he comes in white garments, he go in, go in, others, you can see how he was.
Enneke Christmas kee, enga anna oru dress edukkada.
And at the time of Christmas, my brother got me a dress.
Apo onu, naonu, collegepadikila, naan tenth daa, leave laarunna, enneke, oru blackla, white stripes pottu, oru shirt vayunkutada.
I was in tenth holidays and I, he got me a purchased shirt with stripes in black colored shirt.
Ana naa uyya karangalai kudaiyae, yippudhum irunda.
And I was with the servants of God all the times.
Anegi Christmas serviceukku poida.
I went to the Christmas service.
Muddinavu nee enga brother badhu stotramla.
At the end, I saluted my brother.
Avar enne oru porukku utta.
And he gave me.
Aray badharu, konjam talinnilu, tembi ennekakamara, konjam talinnilu, paravpesavabindha.
He stayed at me and said, you go aside and we will speak later.
Anneoda chachi kukal dressa vitta, konjam konjam, anneoda pradisthamantai, inime chachi kena, enna dressla varapada, kalladressla varapada.
From that day itself and I made a consecration, I vowed that I will come, only in the white garments and not in colored garments.
Ah, indi namalaya ethanavu pradisthamala.
How many can consecrate over seven like this?
Yelmaya, naa unga veetla, bichandaya poodu, basa choltarunna, nee nightek, chandaya poodu, enneke dress vayunkitaanu, pudicharariya.
They that approve and don't quarrel among yourself by telling that a dealer says this way and I come not in the garments.
Inime, onakkayedukka vaaiipu kadakumbuludhu, ebidide, white and white edugal.
When you get the chance to take more garments and you must take in this white garments.
Oru pradisthamanga, sundaykumattuna white poodran.
And make a vow that I will come on Sunday in white garments.
Sundayla yadu naa unia pentikasta pakara, bible shella unia CSA patukkara, kaathirpoodukla RC patukkara. Ah, ebid konjamkonjamati, pati, patukkara unia, oru time varumbuludhu, ninga jaya jeevithukkavanditigna, enga undurvinga, equala.
When time comes and you are attaining this overcoming life and you are equal to it.
Adutu prasingi cholrara, avant thalaila enne korakkaada.
And next, he says that and you should not lack no ointment in your head.
Adi enna? In little way there is a truth and in spiritual way all there is a truth. When you apply oil and you maintain your well and there will be countenance, there will be brightness in your countenance. Bible says. And this oil makes your face. Hundred and four Psalms verse fifteen. And the oil that makes his face shine. For the child of God and he should not lack no ointment in his head. And applying oil to our boys is a great problem to them. And they want to go like a person. And there should not be oil in his head. And many sisters and they do not apply oil. If you apply oil to your head and you will not have any sickness, the Lord says let there shall be no lacking of ointment on your head. After coming to the spiritual life and your face must shine. When the oil is diminishing and the candle light and it is. If the oil is more in the candle and it will bright, very shining. And the believer they that are lacking in anointing and they apply not oil. I want to end up by telling the spiritual matter and lacking in no oil. And some say that and he was anointing my head with oil and my cup overflowed with. When you look on the job twenty nine verse six. And he is saying that and out of the wrong the oil proceed forward. If there should not be a lacking of anointing oil and anointing should not be decreasing. Your oil or anointing your head will should not be decreased even a little bit. And you must have oil in you always. If there is nothing in you, there must be oil in you. A prophet died. He had wife and two children. But he got dead and he was dead died. And he who give the deaths and he came to make him asleep as two children. And he was running toward the prophet. We can settle of the money and where is the oil with you? What he says? What he said? TV, fridge, other. And we have TV and fridge and what are the things in your house? And instead of one curse of oil and there was nothing beautiful left behind. And whatever you may lose in life but you should not lose your anointing. And you should not lose your grace of God. You should not leave your consecration. You should not leave your holiness. At least one part of oil at particular point or level of anointing must be in you all the times. When the oil is decreased and your life is over. Or a girl or a friend or a priest or a priestess. And to a prophet a woman is speaking and we are having the oil. And he was telling that and there should not be lacking of oil in your. When you are taking fasting you must apply oil in your head. We need the life for fasting. They must keep applying. When you are taking fasting should not be known to others. You don't want to drum, you are telling that I was taking fasting, I mean fasting. You will not tell to others but you with sad countenance you may tell that I am taking. And compared to other days and you must be fresh on the particular. And there must be oil on your head. And you must be full prayer. Your fasting prayer shows that the oil is not increased, decreasing. And fasting prayer and they are getting afraid of fasting because they are diabetic person and they will take ten times of meal and three times they eat and they live like this. And you should not change your fasting. And fasting is the time of the Lord. And fasting is the time where you dwell with the Lord. And there is Ubaasam you have to dwell with the Lord. In medical shop and they have made a board like this and fasting is a good medicine. And some they keep on eating, they have not passed. You must bind your mouth. If you bind your mouth and belly and you have bind the sickness. And in fasting your oil should not be decreased. When we look into March chapter six verse thirteen. And they have applied oil and they have cured. Find fourteen of James what it says. And when he was sickness and he called the elder and he prayed and the sickness will be healed to them. In the matters of healing and the oil should not be decreased. You must practice divine healing. Ask unto God if you heal, where will I go? You are the fisherman of Gilead. Is there no barmen in Gilead? Is there no fisherman in Israel? And why the doctor of my people was not cured? Lord you heal me. And he have given us and he will heal us. And look unto your ways and heal you. The Lord says I will look unto the ways and I heal you. If your ways are proper and I will heal you. And there should not be lacking of oil in your head. That shows your healing. When we look into Luke chapter seven verse forty six. He said then. Seven forty six of Luke. He entered the house. The habit of the Jews when they go to the house and they will give the water to wash their feet and oil top laying on head. It shows the giving honor and respect. But the Pharisee I give a feast to him but he did not give respect to him. He did not honor him. And he called him to have a feast in his house. And calling him to the house what happened? He gave him food and he pleased all the feast before him. And she fell at the feet of Jesus. And she was wiping her tears. And she kissed her feet. And wiped them with the hairs of her head. And he asked what is this? And what is this? You call feast to your house. And you would give water to my feet. You are a Jew. You know the Bible. But you give not water to my feet. You called me, you invited me, you kissed me not. But she came forward to do everything. When I was a third year student. And they opened the shop. It was a believer. And seven o'clock, eight o'clock he called me to open the shop. And he says you must pray for it. I said okay. I prayed. And they took me aside. And they put me aside and the firm came and they opened the house by cutting the ribbon and that was so. I was an elder brother, I don't know whether he became an elder. And the one who came, the one who was a believer. And the one who was also a believer. I thought. I thought. He give not importance to God and honored him not and within one month he closed the shop. And cutting the ribbon doesn't matter, I want to pick him up. And you honoring the. And Jesus said I came to your house but you are not going to hit. Giving honor and respect in Christian life, this is the first part. Ganammanu vadi. Ganammanu vadi. You are a father. He is a father. He is a father. He is a father. He is a father. How is your life, are you honoring others? You must honor your husband. You must honor your wife. You must honor your husbands. You must honor the servants of God. And you must honor the elders. If you practice like this the Lord will honor you. If you practice like this the Lord will honor you. And what you saw you will reap. If you honor others and when you are doing all these services to others, when you are doing this another class and they make them to do unto you. And leaving them and going aside and don't have this practice and the same style will be given to you. You must take heed in this matter. After coming to the spiritual life and there should not be lack of oil on your head. What I am saying is that while you are honoring is that you are playing oil on your head. A right fasting. A right healing. You must have the him. Even if you listen you not and you must go forward and tell the praise of the Lord and how you are and ask unto them. And you can see he saluted the day that our officers in the land. And when he saluted him and they said unto you are a good prince, a great prince and how you can come and. And he is a father of faith and he is a good father, very good in faith and you see and how path you have traveled and how we must love in these days. Calling Jesus into his house and he said I entered at your house, you gave me no water and gave me not to help my wife and wipe not my tears and wipe not my feet and he said so. And we can see the wise virgins and the wise virgins. And you must keep applying oil upon your weapon all the times. Twenty one five of Isaiah. He princes arise and anoint the shield. You must prepare for the battle. And you must prepare yourself to fight the way of your feet. Eat and drink and then you should not leave a struggling hand for the feet. When you look into one forty one five of Psalms. And let the outrageous. He smited my head. And how it would be? And pass this call that me alone until the past was here and it will not come. And what to do for instead of you I cannot call you? It will not happen. If you backside and who is responsible? I have authority to. And the Bible says that is the life of a free life. And you are all my children. And Paul says I should have to thank the man. And looking unto the people and Paul is asking should I come with the meekness or love or drag the whip and come unto you? When I was a tributary clan juror and Sivakasi and I used to have some whip in my nearby and when most shaking I will beat them like anything. First Sunday, second week I entered into the service. And he told that mark is very. And it was decreased a lot and I don't know what is going to happen. You must come and defend the place. And after the time I entered into the praying. Among hundred children fifty above fifty and above fifty or below fifty. And I said that those who are above fifty can go up and below fifty can come. And don't mistake me what I say now. I had a bamboo stick. A male or female whatever it may be and those who are below fifty you must come in line. Fourteen. Sharp over addict. Fourteen. Fourteen. They also. Confirm. Because the. The single treatment until now. One day. College. I am poor or rich and whatever it may be I beat like anything now I am waiting for the transfiguration. So I never turn toward that side because they confuse me. So I am called in headmaster and supervisor. Why I am telling this? And they that are below fifty and they started to give eighty above and above ninety and ninety eight and ninety nine and they were in that skin level. You are a child. And I never seen anyone. Because they are our children. Center. Center. He is a child. He is a child. Fourty forty. The price. This one. This one. They are selling. Sunday school children's convention. They are selling. And they must compete in such a way and they used to tell and they could conduct the. One day. And there is a problem in Kerala when they are getting beatings in the. And don't have this practice in you. He is a child. 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 And such generations are coming new in this church. And reproving is all you need. They are loving you. If they are reproving you, they are loving you. If the father is not chastening you then you are the person of the other mad person so he is not chastising you. May the God's holy name be glorified. For some some incidents happens and they go back. Some death will take them to the backsliding. And sometimes the money and facility to take them to the backsliding. And for David his son was dead. He was sorrowful and grieving and in seven days he took fasting and prayed. And at last he died. And they felt with difficulty to face him and to approach him and say this matter. He rose up and applied oil and. And mix of the sorrowful in you should not be sinking it and you must. And twelve seventeen of second Samuel. He rose up and put away the garments of the sorrowful and came out and with the oil. Today the Lord's word, the Lord speaking to us and servants of God and the believers of the church is that there has been no oil. Let there be no oil of hell in your head. If your garments are white as pure and you will do the overcoming life. And if there is fullness of anointing and you can hear the voice of the. My son, my daughter, let your garments be white always. My son, my daughter, let there be no ointment lacking in your head. And they the garments that are white and they that look no ointment head well they can be taken up. He that overcomeeth and I will make him give it to him to sit on my throne. Two or three minister with the hands of the Lord. The words that touched you you must keep in the presence of God you must struggle and strive now. They that are able to stand on knees, you stand on knees and worship him. And one anointing. And not an ordinary anointing. A right anointing must come down. What kind of anointing? Until now you may not have oil in your head but till now you should not be lacking in oil. Until now you may be colorful but hereafter you will become in white and white. He that overcomeeth. The white garments will be given to him. How many wants such a life? And these that want the power of the word of God must come down, lift up your hands. You may be in any kind of state the Lord is well able to give the life of this word of God and can change you to anything. The Lord's grace is going to visit you now. His mercy is going to visit you now. Today he is going to take the filthy garments. He is going to take away the sorrowful garments. He is going to remove the old garments. He is going to change the present garments. He is going to give the beautiful garments. He is going to give the garments of salvation. He is going to give you the beautiful garments. Oh kalyanavastarate tarapohra. He is going to give you the wedding garments. He is going to give you the royal apparel. When you sanctify. When you see your vows. When you control your words. When you renew your prayer line. When you stay alone on shrine. When you sin there is a parisuta. You will become a conqueror. When you are a beast. Today the Lord is going to give you anointing. Do you know oil anointing? Anyways to be confirmed. Amen. And there shall be no lacking of anointing in your head. You will overcome. You will be transfigured. And you will hear the trumpet sound. You will be taken up. And let there be oil malakin in your head. Today the Lord is going to give you anointing. Do you know oil anointing? Anyways to be confirmed. Amen. And there shall be no lacking of anointing in your head. You will overcome. You will be transfigured. And you will hear the trumpet sound. You will be taken up. In the in the. Yes, you are a man. What is the. A paracoma. If you come out of the praying in the presence of God and how the Jesus garments became white as snow and he is also going to give the same whiteness and brightness in you. The Lord have to keep the oil upon your head. Amen. You are keeping the oil upon you, the Lord is going to keep the fresh oil of. At any situation your anointing will not be decreased. The word of God will utterly is not. He is expecting some matter in you. You must overcome. A girl. When a child is joined the school and mother used to think and you must study well. And the things that and you have to get all the prizes. And the mother desires. And the God is deciding my child is overcome. And he must be transformed. Our child must prosper. In my name she can they have to take up the head and the swab. Adu devundhi vanjay
And that is the desire of the Lord
Unne valakamal thaleyakkuvay, nikkeelakamal melavai
Thou shalt not be done, but we can know
Hallelujah, revala bakka, thida, bakka, thida baniya, revala banna, bakka, thidaba Ha Oru abhishekathodu mudike pogara
Anointing, you are going to end up now
Thavidusolukar
David says
Puduyenneyinal, yan thaleyavar abhishekamandhur
And he anoint my head with fresh oil
Kandamirugathai polan, balanbadh adakara
I want the strength of you like a unicorn
Naanipidi puduyenneyinal abhishekamandhapadumbadhu, andhukandamirugathukotha, balanvarumbadhu, satrukkel vekkappadukar
When the fresh oil comes upon me, when I am visiting the strength of the unicorn, my enemies are confirmed
Ippa, ippanakutthukvarumbodhu, oru satru one pathu, enne yossha
Coming to this meeting, and your enemy is what they think about you
Pariyasammanana
Did they mock at you
Kutranjattana
Did he accused you
Kervikatana
Did he ask questions
Unne avumanapaduthana
With the
Yupikinshi Unne arpama ennaana
Did he count in the dismaving
Idhala naranduk
This all better happened
Samudhayathale, sabaila, janangalmathila, kudumbathila, pallarmathila, ongalukke, palaporatangal
You may have many problems among the society, among the church, and the people, and your family
Ananiniki kattar onakk, on thalele enne korayavam, oru puduyenneyin abhisheyathitharapogara
But today, the Lord is going to give you a new one, a fresh oil, that oil lacks not in you
Un satrukkel vekkathayadu vayap
And your enemies will be confirmed
Un satrukkelukke vekkathay uduthuvay Viswasi thaladu onakkubalika
If thou shalt believe, it will prosper to you
Ethanavir viswasiyikiriga
How many of you believe this
Viswasiyikira onakkadu balika
And they that believe will be prospered
Thida bakara, bakka, thida bakka, thida bakka, thida Amen, amen Onakk abhishekayirukke
You have anointing
Naandabhisheyathetoladha
I am not telling that anointing
Indha vasanathakaitaparaghu, onakkukadakira abhishekavu, puduyenney
The anointing after you hear the word of God, and that is the fresh oil
Challenge pananu
You must challenge
Indhiki puduyabhisayam kadakide, abhidina, adundhe challenge, satru vekkappaduva
And today, if you are receiving a new oil, the challenges, your enemies are confounded
Ethanavir viswasiyikiriga
How many believe this
Sariyana oru abhishekam
A right anointing
Apidiyadirecta, oru tuudano, devano, oru asariano, on thalele vandhandhe enne oothano
Directly, a God of ages, of peace, but come and pour your head, oil upon your head
Ethanavir vanchikiriga
How many are desiring this
Apidiyeyenne varkappattavana, ne vediyavohana
As the one with the oil oil, we must go out
Revala bakara, bakka, thida, bakka, thida baniya Amen Puduyenneyal, abhishekayu, satrukkel Amen Kathode vaathagale kaistothramanva Kathode vasanangale kaistothramanva Vasanathin vallamayilai jivyathuka istothramanva Vasanangaita ellarindhe valki payichvithukulla, udhiviseyamudiyai istothramanva Indha vasanangale payichvithi jaykravulai serkay swargararukka istothramanva Andhunalikandre ellarayayatupaduthumudiyai istothramanva Pidaakumaran parisutha aviyana oru kaistothramanva Ella magimi avukka isalati istothramanva Job
Engle nesikranallan, adhvaray, asurikupattada, namadhamaymin samuthukka, ayinidhi odum, istothrikiro Adi, aare karanvaranla, neyadengale, kanmanivon, padukathindu, varathin, pankatha, amadhanali, aviyodum, meodum, namadhumuthal, aradike, aviyile, kalyuera, aviyile, mayile, devasamuthal, vandhassandoshabada, mayile, thanthakribika, ayinidhi odum, istothrikiro Persutthaviyana oru indha kaalavalile, engle, oborovarukke, deviana, aalushanu, indha kaalavalile, devaviyana oru engle, kvelipaduthu, thanthirathukka, ayinidhi odum, istothrikirangathavi Andhvaray, engkustothra, engadavastaran, yappadu venmaya, engadthanale, enne kurayadha, daan kaanapadu, daag, indha vasanathin, lendhu, kattaringalodu, pesan, naala, aalushanika, istothramandhvaray Naangal, yappadu, engadavastarattiparsutthamai, padukathupala, venmaya, kathupala, andhikindha, kaalavalile, andhvaray, thirukattavu, naala, aalushanu, englikuthandhiranandhvaray Indha aalushanu, madhijivitha, engadajivitha, venmaya, kathupala, persutthamai, kathupala, aviyana oru englikuthesimudiyagavendiklarangathavi Andhvaray, naangling, kattavastarattive, venmaya, kathupala, yappadu, kattavu, naangal, paavi, andhvaray, engadavava, arikasirul, angalamachumudiyagavendiklaru Naangal, paavari, keshimudhu, kattavu, andhvaray, naangal, sutthi, irikapadumudhu, andhvaray, englikuthakka, venmaya, avastaran, engla, tharupika, ballavara, ikirirandhvaray Kattavu, naangal, paavari, keshimudhu, avu, engadavava, sevairan, indha, panchayipol, venmaya, kandusolirikirirandhvaray Andhanoththa, naangal, kathupala, englikuthesimudiyagavendiklarangathavi Engadaprideshan, jivitha, naangal, kathupala, udheshi, andhaprideshan, kattavu, andhvaray, kattavu, palavamana, avikiri, anumangal, avikir, varangal, undhanda, avikir, varangale, kathupala, udheshi Andhvaray, engkustothra, andhvaray, engadaprideshan, jivitha, kathukundu, yappadu, kattavu, mukunbaga, naangal, venmai, persutthamala, laik, kaanapadengal, kuthesin, kattavu Andhvaray, engadavayin, vaathaila, naangal, persutthamai, kathupala, udheshi, mediklarangathavi Andhvaray, engkustothra, indhi, malile, tanithirundhe, jebithurunadavastaran, antar, panchayipol, venmaya, kathavu, andhavennmaya, avastarattive, naangal, madhakattavu, naangal, kandhadiya, naangal, indhanalkal, tanithirundhe, jebikarulag, tanithirundhe, poradurulag, angalamachumudiyagavendiklaru Yakko, pongal, tanithirundhe, jebithuvat, jayta, pechukundan, andhvaray, daniil, gudanithirundhe, jebithu, veri, jayta, pechukundhu, bol, danalkal, naangal, tanithirundhe, jebikarulag, angalamachumudiyagavendiklaru Aviyana oray, kattavu, engadashirasa, yappadu, kattavu, andhvaray, persutthamai, kaanapadakka, daaga, andhvaray Andhvaray, engkustothra, engadashirasa, persutthamai, kudiyaga, persutthasindi, kattledumudiyagavendiklarangathavi Aviyana oray, engkustothra, jayingalurukke, venmaya, avastaran, tharikapadumadu, solipadukke, kattavu Naangal, venmaya, avastaran, tharikapadumadu, andhvaray, engle, jayindarulag, angalamachumudiyagavendiklarangathavi Engadthanale, enne kurayavam, engle, padukakamay, kattavu, ennen, kattavu, andhvaray, abhisheyathukrikiradha, andhvaray Andhvaray, enne kattam, magakale, muntavu, ne, ennen, solipadukke, kattavu Indha abhisheyathakka, naangal, yappadu, kathupalangal, kuthesin, kattavu, andhene, kurayavam, engle, padukakumudiyagavendiklarangathavi Andhakattas, triyungudambra, padathle, enne varthal, thanale, padathle, kattavu, andhut, thaila, thanale, thaila, pochnanal, andhvaray Padathle, kaniirutthi, jebithu, kattavu, thanale, enne varthal, pochnathu, bol Naangal, mudam, padathle, kaniirunnaal, ninithu, mudathanale, enne, thaila, vartharala, naangal, kaanapadu, engle, mudamudeshi, kattavu Engadavilakkigalile, kattavu, enne kaanapadattanandhvaray Andhaputtila, streeyapol, engad, kattavilakkal, enne kurayavam, kaanapadu, udeshi Manavala, naagin, neer varumbadhu, naangal, manavada, naagin, yesu vinaangal, edurvandhu, maasandikattakka, daaga Engadavilakkigalile, yappadu, enne kaanapadu, udeshi, mediklaru Indhanalkal, naangal, ketta, daan, dhavathirundhe, jivitha, engadaparsutthavastarattive, naal, kathukundu, engadaparsutthavandhu, maymil, velipadumbadhu Maasandikengal, thayipaduthumudiyayavendiklaru Engelakthaalthor, varumiyakkuru Thiribella vasanthikengal, thaalthopadikara, andhvaray Dhavathirundhe, naangal, jivitha, persutthamai, kapattu, andhvaray, ven, kattavu, jayungundal, kaivathirukkana, andheshingasana, venvastaran, tharithavulag, singasana, thakkaanapadu, thaydiyakumudiyayavendiklaru Andhvaray, engadaviyatham, sanam